Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Tom Courier. I work for the Massachusetts Department of Transportation's Highway Division in Boston, Mass. And tonight, we're here to talk about the Route 9 Main Street Re-Imvolvation Project from High Street to Grove Street here in Spencer, Mass. And it's a really good project. I'm here at the request of the Secretary of Transportation and Chief Engineer Patricia Levinworth in Boston. What we're doing tonight is a design public hearing. It's a legal process, the purpose of which is to gather your input on the project and to find out your ideas, concerns, criticisms, suggestions. We want to hear all of it, and we'll be here as long as you want us to be. As long as you guys want to talk about this project, we'll stay and see what we can learn in part. So I have some representatives from our district office in Worcester, Mass., District Three. I have Arthur Frost, who's the project development engineer. I have Robin Giando, who's our right-of-way representative, and Ross Goodell, who's the utility coordination person. And our design engineering firm is BHP Inc. They have an office in Worcester in that beautiful train station. And we have Amanda Bassinet.
Greg Russell.
Greg Russell. I lost Greg's first name. Greg Russell and Brian Brosnan, BHP. Brian's the project manager. And they've designed this work that you see on these boards here. And it's a difficult job to design. It's an old town with difficult grading to make work for all that we want to fit in here, but it's going to be beautiful when it's done. And let me just refer to my little script here so I don't forget anything. The projected cost right now is approximately $3.2 million. This doesn't include any right-of-way acquisition costs or utility relocation costs, but that's probably a viable amount, part of the contractors' going to bid on. The funding sources are congestion mitigation funds and highway safety improvement funds and some CAP funds, which is a new acronym that basically are enhancement funds. And the federal government participates between 80 and 90 percent in the cost of this job, which is nice. The construction is expected to take about two years, and we hope to advertise it in the spring of 2016, April perhaps. Perhaps sooner if we can get everything done in time. There's a lot of right-of-way work that has to be done, and of course, the design takes time. But what we'll do with your comments tonight is we'll try and reflect them in the further design submissions and advance this to a bid package that we'll put out for bid in April of 2016 or hopefully a little earlier. And with that, I'm going to stop and let Robin Giando explain the right-of-way process. No, she's got her own mic. You go ahead, you hang on to it. She's got her own.
Thank you.
I will.
Good evening. When the Commonwealth acting through its Massachusetts Department of Transportation Highway Division indicated it would accept this $3.2 million project for funding under our federal aid program, your municipality accepted certain responsibilities. One of those responsibilities is to acquire all the necessary rights in private and public lands for the design, construction, and implementation of this project. My function is to review and recommend procedures that your municipality will utilize in acquiring these rights. The procedures used must comply with both federal and state regulations. The current design plans indicate that no fee acquisitions, 28 permanent easements will be required, and that other areas may require temporary easements or right-of-entries. Your municipality may acquire the needed rights through a combination of donations, eminent domain, degrants, permits, or rights of entries. Frequently, local municipalities will appeal for donations. Donation procedures minimize the acquisition cost for your community. Donations and rights of entries are not required, and property owners are entitled to an appraisal and just compensation. This project cannot be advertised until the new proposed right-of-way is secured and the Right-of-Way Bureau issues a right-of-way certificate. Effective property owner's rights are protected under our Massachusetts General Laws, primarily Chapter 79, and because this project is receiving federal funds, the property owner's rights are further defined under Title III of the Real Property Acts of 1970 as amended. I'm happy to answer any general questions concerning right-of-way activities during the open forum, and I will be available after the hearing for any specific questions you may have. Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. Now I'm going to introduce Brian, who will give us a technical rundown on the project. Put a hand over this microphone.
That's his. You keep that. All right, I'll hang on. It's all for you.
This is fine. Thank you very much, folks. Thanks for coming out and helping us unite as Tom said. BHP is the engineer doing the design work, the consultant for the town. So what I'll do is I'll spend a couple minutes just kind of sort of going through the project design as it stands right now. Obviously, as Tom said, the limits are from High Street to just beyond Maple Street, just before Grove Street. That's around 1,300 feet. You'll also notice that we have worked on Pleasant Street, particularly the other main design work here is the other realignment of Pleasant Street. But just talk a little bit about Main Street first. From a design standpoint, for the curb lines that are out there now, we're not really going to be doing a whole lot of change with the curb lines as they stand. There is a little bit widening. That's going to happen on the south side of Main Street, from Elm Street and Wall. Again, there's going to be a little bit of change in the curb line in front of the subdune block in order to install an exclusive right turn lane. We're going to be maintaining much of the curb line as we head up the hill. There will be a little bit of curb realignment at the intersection to improve the alignment to fit the lanes in better than needed. As far as the lanes go, the lanes are about the amount, pretty much, of the same operation I'm going to keep, except for the addition of an exclusive right turn lane from Main Street westbound onto Pleasant Street northbound. We won't keep the left turn lane from Main onto Pleasant. We'll provide the same right turn lane from Main onto Maple and again, excuse me, in the other direction, the left turn lane. One of the main things you'll see that kind of had to do with the change of the alignment a little bit had to do with the inclusion of a bike lane. We're going to have a marked, pavement markings out there for an exclusive five-foot-wide bike lane on both sides of the roadway. So that's been installed. Some of the other terrible things have to do with what we call bump outs. They're provided to provide protection both for those who park and also to lessen the length of the crosswalks that, so people can get across the roadway at shorter distances. Some of the other things that are on Main Street, as we can see here, is again, is the crosswalks. You can see those in the red color. Right now, we have those as shown as a stamped epoxy red brick color, but that remains to be seen if there's other concern about how that can look because we're certainly going to change that as the design process continues forward. But right now, that's how we're showing them. Then we're having crosswalks throughout the whole area. One thing you'll notice is a major change here is that we are going to be shifting the crosswalk that is now on the east side of Mechanic Street to the west side. There has been some concern raised by the town that where it was now is a very dangerous location. We know that someone had crossed there a couple of years ago and has been hit and killed. So we're going to be making that change. And also, the main thing to talk about is Pleasant Street. The realignment here is to do with trying to line up Pleasant Street Mall with Wall Street to provide more easier access, safer access for those. We need to lay in that intersection, so the idea is that instead of having the two signals that are there right now, which are kind of offset, we'll reduce that down to one. Speaking about the signals, obviously, there is two that we talked about here at Wall and Pleasant, and there's this thing on Maple. And we'll be replacing those fully with brand-new signal systems. They will coordinate with each other. There will be coordinated pet phases as well, so that when you get into the areas where the crosswalks are, you push a button and then, oh, no, you push a button and then a pet phase will happen. We'll engage so people can cross the areas safely. One thing I also noticed about the crosswalk here, and I know I always get this wrong, we are going to have what's called a rapid rectangular flashing beacon. So it's not just going to be a series of signs out there, but actually flashing lights. So when people push the button, there'll be more to let them know, let the traveling public know that they're crossing the crosswalk there. Couple of other things. We realize this is an historic area. There are a number of historical elements in the project. There is the signs that recognize the old hotel that Julie Washington, I think, stayed in. So it's going to be relocating that as part of the project, but we're making that a more prominent feature along the roadway. We have the Henry Knox Trail marker, bless you. Here, we're going to be making more prominent, and also the lot marker in front of the Price Chopper. We're not going to be, excuse me, we're not going to be moving them very much, but like I said, I think the idea is to make them a little bit more prominent. And we have been working with the historical commission in town, and we will continue to do so to make sure that we treat these things the way they should be. One other key area to look at is this big green space that's here that's created as a result of the shift in Pleasant Street. Right now, we don't really have any idea what to do there. The idea is to try to sort of get people's input, get the town input, get the business owners' input to see what would be the best solution for that area, how to treat it. Maybe if it's possible, to put some parking in there. Maybe it's to utilize what businesses are there. Someone had talked about before, some of the other meetings about putting in some sort of patio space for outdoor dining. So like I said, it's a blank slate. We've done nothing. Like I said, I think we need to hear from the residents and from the businesses just exactly what could be proposed there, and we'll try to work with whatever we can. The other thing to notice is that by shifting Pleasant Street to the west, we obviously impact the area that is in the area of the bank. And I know that we haven't finished that design either as far as what's going to happen here. I think the town is still in negotiations with the bank as far as just exactly how to finish off that property. So we'll be looking to do on that at the next stage. The other thing I wanted to mention is the sidewalks. I know that right now, we have out there those two-tier sidewalks, and that was always, as Tom mentioned, that was a challenge for us to try to sort of design and get something that was ADA acceptable, so handicapped folks could enter all the businesses. We are going to keep the two-tier sidewalks between Wall and Elm. One thing we're going to do is we're going to provide a handicap ramp on this end so that folks with handicaps can access these businesses and those buildings. We're going to try to remove the two-tier here by sloping the sidewalk from people's front doors down to the new sidewalk there, so we can get rid of that tier. And we're also going to try to get rid of the tier in front of the subdune block. Probably going to require having a higher curb and a handrail for safety purposes. So we're trying to work around that. Like I said, that's always an issue for providing ADA access. We have all the landscape amenities out here. Like I said, these brown areas are just more kind of sort of mulch areas where plantings can go in. We haven't really come up with that design yet, but that's something we'll work on on the next stage. The other thing, too, that we're still going to look into is right now, we're proposing streetlights. We have some locations that are out there now that we're proposing, but again, as part of the next stage, we'll do more detail, design for that, and also work with the historical folks as far as what those lights should look like, some sort of historic piece that doesn't contrast with the feel of the downtown. Oh, there's an issue that I'll bring up as well. I know that parking is always an issue in these types of projects, especially in downtown areas where there's a lot of businesses. And unfortunately, we are going to be losing with this design a couple of spaces. I think what we counted and what we're putting back, we're going to be reducing by, the number would be five. What we've noticed is that because we've slid the crosswalk that's there now down to here to the west of Mechanic Street, provided the new curbing there, we're going to be losing two parking spots. And then because we've had to shift Pleasant Street to the west, I believe that there was signs here for one hour parking, and I believe there's three spaces there that we're probably going to lose. So I know that's always a difficult subject to talk about with businesses and folks in the downtown area, but like I said, we're trying to put back as much parking as we can. And like I said, we've lost just about five spaces. There'll be new signing, new striping. Other historical elements include the, there's a wall in this general area here retaining all that has horse hitching posts or horse hitching, whatever you want to call them. We're going to save those as well. And like I said, we'll work with the historical folks and with the town and also Mass EOT to make sure that any historical element that's out there is maintained. Oh, drainage and utilities. We're really not touching much in the way of the drainage that's on Main Street. We're pretty much keeping all in kind. We'll just have to probably adjust the grades to the catch basins. Because we are realigned at Pleasant Street, we'll have to build a new drainage line that ties into Main Street. Utility-wise, we have, I believe it's two poles that are going to be taken out, two poles that are going to have to be put back in new locations. And I think all the other poles within the project limits, except for two or three, are going to need to be reset. We've looked at the pavement. We've done testing out here as far as what the pavement has. I know that there's some serious issues along this hill. There's shoving and running in the pavement. We've done testing out there and done a pavement design per Mass EOT standards. And we're proposing at the moment to grind off four inches of pavement that's out there now and put back four inches. So we're really not going to be changing the profile of the roadway. We're going to be maintaining that. I think one issue that we found is that if we were, for instance, going to try to raise the profile, to kind of sort of eliminate the two-tier sidewalk situation, is that that aspirates the steepness of some of these side streets. So the idea is to stay away from doing any profile changes. And we'll be doing, the heavy dark color is fold that pavement, so it's going to be a brand-new pavement structure. And then on the side streets, we'd probably just grind off two inches of the existing pavement, put back two inches new of pavement. And that all covers the town.
All right. Nice job. So everything's going to be brand-new from building facade to building facade across the street all the way down, with all the historical character maintained, but pedestrian access, bicycle access, vehicular access, all improved. And I just want to emphasize that this isn't a final design. This is a preliminary design. We will be modifying it, enhancing it, revising it according to your input, and refining it according to our own standards. Certain things occur at certain points along the design evolution. The next submission will be arriving, Amanda? Who does all the work, by the way?
Late spring, I think.
Late spring and early.
I thought early.
Okay, that would be what we call the 75% design. And there's one more, 100% design. And then the next one is the bid package, plan, spec, and estimate, what we refer to as PSE. That's what the contractors will bid. So these aren't the final designs. These are preliminary designs. We want to capture your input. If you would like, if you would prefer to write your comments down or questions down and submit them in writing later, there's a submission sheet in the back of the handout that's over there in the back by the sign-in sheet. You're welcome to put your questions or comments on that and mail it to me. If it arrives within the next 10 days from tonight's hearing, it becomes part of the official public record. As I said, this is actually a legal proceeding, and so anything that we receive in the next 10 days, we will enter into the formal public record along with the sign-in sheet and so on, and everything that Walter's capturing. And now, I think unless I've forgotten something, we can, by tradition, typically ask any elected officials if they have comments. We always invite them to speak first. If we don't have any that are here tonight or that don't care to speak up right of way, we'll open it up to everybody. And I see this gentleman over here.
Need to give him a hand, Mike, please?
Yes, yeah, absolutely will. If you could just be kind enough to state your name and spell your last name for the transcription.
Kurt Knutquist, Gail Drive Spencer. I've been there 40 years in town. I just want to say that. I had a problem with this whole concept. I brought this up, and we start from day one here. Is this a guaranteed goal if there's opposition from the people in this town?
Well, we want to hear your comments.
Well, I just asked a comment. Is this a guaranteed goal? Is it a goal whether we like it or not? Is that a yes or no?
Well, I suppose if there's an overwhelming opposition, it won't go. It's your project.
Well, I think that in the spring, we're going to have a flag goes out when towns spring and fall asking for people's comments. I hope the town puts out the flag and asks for response. It happened the last couple of years. 1,800 people supported a particular thing in town, and that kept it going. I worked in a big deal in Boston. Not that I know it all, but things happen, and engineering designs come and go, and costs balloon. And I can tell you right now, just for one thing, when they dug last couple of weeks on Main Street for the gas line, I went down there, I looked at the underneath of the asphalt. It's nothing but sand and common fill. So if you did test blocks, you must have found out, whether you're scared of it or not, it's not going to work. To prove that point, if you start at the Town Hall from there to Maple Street, that's where it's real bad, and you're not going to fix that. Is that correct? Right in front of the Town Hall.
Town Hall's up here?
No.
Town Hall's in there.
Right now, they are.
In front of Town Hall.
Go west.
Yeah, we're working all in. Anything is great.
Okay, because that's the part you come down to, up the traffic light. If you get any change in a pocket, you'll be on the floor before you start. But...
It shouldn't run it there, isn't it?
It's bad. It should be concrete like they had with Route 20 in Chalton, going into Chalton. It's a lot more maintenance-free. It doesn't frost and grieve. So if you prepare for the state, you're not considered. I happened to hear before a meeting about traffic lights on Wall Street and Pleasant Street.
Yep.
It's a simple fix. Make all the lights work on the same. If you stop on Pleasant Street, you should stop on Main Street at the top of the hill, not put more lights on so you come, you got to start coming and go. That's an easy fix. You don't have to spend all this money doing that. That's a common fix. The third thing is you're going to lose parking downtown, towards the downtown. Nobody wants to walk from Wall Street or Elm Street to go shop on Main Street. So that's a dream. I don't, if I shop downtown, I'm going to park in front of a Chinese restaurant or a Kenwood Diner or something and go in there. I'm not going to walk from there up to there. You might park in Price Chopper, or you might park in the bank. It's easier to park in front of businesses. All these parts have done, when you take space away from merchants, you lose business. You don't draw business downtown. You lose businesses. And parking garages, people don't want to pay. That's why you go to malls. So it's a hard sell. And that little island that you had on Pleasant Street there, that shouldn't even be there. If you got to make the turn for trailer trucks, which you say, and they say, how to return, and I go trailer trucks, and everybody knows, you got to swing out to go in there. That's going to be a hindrance because it's going to be in the way if the guy has to make a wide turn. And then when you plow snow, that's going to be in the way because you got to get less and less, you're not going to plow up from there. It's a poor design. It's a poor design. And on Pleasant Street, where you have the green, you don't know what's going to be, grass or parking. Well, if you got parking there, you could park it across the street in the bank lot. So you're not going to, you got to gain four or five spots, but I don't think that's going to be a help.
All right.
I think the whole thing needs to be redesigned.
Redo the whole thing.
If you look, for example, down on Route 20, where you're down by Inverwell now, they make the road, it goes down to Route 12, and it widens it out, and then you get down to your turn, it goes back to two lanes again. So you put all the cars out here, and then you squeeze them down. So what purpose was that except to book more cars in the congested area? But that's how, that's how the engineering happens to work, and I think it's a poor design. I don't see no bicycle trails down there on Route 20. I don't see no sidewalks down there.
I wasn't involved in that one. Let me get some other comments.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you very much for speaking. There's the town hall.
You want to go first, Mr. Stevens?
Oh, no, go ahead. Okay.
So this is first and last name, just the last name.
James Whalen, W-H-A-L-E-N. I'm the chairman of the town planning board, and John Vine is here tonight as well. Only question that I really have is similar to Mr. Knutquist's concern around Pleasant Street, Wall, Main Street here, where the right-hand lane would come onto Pleasant Street. Currently, yes, the traffic light is here. And the one thing that I've noticed is not everyone realizes that this is a, you got a left-hand right-of-way on the first green light. And I know sometimes people are still stopping to think that other traffic's coming. Adding a light there just for a left turn, I think would help, and also modifying or somehow working around this area, because I can imagine that this would be, this would be a yield. But when this light turns off for the left, if there's a left turn light, there's going to be a race.
There's a dedicated left, right? Yeah, that's what the left turn pocket's for.
Yeah, where there will be a protected left turn.
I can't hear you if you're not at a microphone.
There's a protected left, and meaning you'll get an exclusive, you'll get an arrow. Nobody moves except for the left. And how about the pet phase? I'll repeat what you said.
The pet phase is run concurrently.
Mike, yeah, why did you use the hand?
The pet phase is run concurrently with the way the signal's going. So people can't, I mean, you don't have an exclusive pet phase that the entire signal shuts down and you just have pets.
Not required, yeah.
It's not required, but it runs, it doesn't run exclusive, but it runs, sorry for the jargon, it runs concurrent.
Yeah.
So that you can cross at certain intervals safely.
Sure.
For pedestrians.
Yeah. Thanks, Brian. I'll give it to the next person. Mr. Stevens, did you have a question? Just a couple of questions, yeah. If you could just...
Stevens, S-T-E-V-E-N-S. Board of Selectmen, first name? John.
Thank you.
I'm here because I really feel like we need to pay a lot of attention to our merchants, and the parking is a perpetual issue. I also think that the plans here beg a basic question, and again, I would ask our merchants to respond to this, is what kind of center do we want Spencer to become? Do we want to continue as it is now, or do we want to add some additional life to downtown? And I know people, I share this at times, but I know people tend to roll their eyes at this, you know, this new green space and what that's going to serve, but there's an opportunity there in terms of the life we could add to downtown Spencer. It strikes me that as busy as our downtown is, there aren't a lot of folks just hanging out in an ice cream place or a yogurt place, you know, food vendors that would make downtown a little more attractive, or even the possibility of music or some activity in Main Street. I think we have to, you know, look beyond, try and look beyond the kind of Main Street we have right now if we want to make this an attractive center where people come and spend more time. And presumably, if people are spending more time, you know, there's potentially a lot more, you know, activity for merchants as well. So I think it does beg the question of what kind of downtown we want to, we want Spencer So I think it does beg the question of what kind of downtown we want to, we want Spencer to become. Do we want to continue as it is now or do we see some new opportunities here? And I think it would serve the purposes of future discussions and give more thought to what might happen to that newly created green area next to Sogden Block, especially in terms of, you know, how it might be offered or suggested to some people who are responding to the RFP that's going out on the Sogden Block. So I'm, but I really would have to, you know, yield to our merchants and to hear what they would like to see into downtown life in Spencer and in the parking. I understand their defensiveness about, you know, protecting as many spaces there as possible. And I don't know if we've, you know, done the last count among every possible parking space out of downtown, but that's going to continue to be a challenge. But thank you for that.
That's a great comment. We've all seen some really nice landscape treatments in areas like that where there's a seating area perhaps or meandering walkway, people could, you know, spend some time. Is there anyone else who'd like to say something? Comment, question? Here's a gentleman.
My name's Steve Woodcombe, W-O-O-D-C-O-M-E. I'm with Fisher Auto Parts. I'm a regional manager. I have a store that's right out here on Main Street.
You're somewhere?
Yes, right, right about where you are. One of the concerns I have was everybody talking about parking. You're going to lose five spaces on the road, from my understanding. How many are you going to lose out of the parking lot that's up on top? Brian?
I think the idea is that, as I said before, we still haven't, and the town can jump in any time here, is that we don't realize yet just exactly what is going to happen. At least, we do not understand what's going to happen yet with the bank property and all that. We are encroaching on it quite a bit. That's something that still remains to be seen.
But right now, I mean, you know...
I mean, right now, according to what we're showing, we're taking up, we're not taking up parking.
Between 10 and 20 or something?
10.
10 is... Easily 10.
Now, one of the things I noticed, now, one of the things I noticed in the last night, they were doing some construction down there. Construction vehicles were parked there during the day or at night and there was also some debris like...
Was that the gas company?
I don't know who it was. I come in and out of town, so I can't... My concern would be during that time of construction, two years' worth of construction, where are all these construction vehicles going to be parking? Are they going to be dumping some of the, there was asphalt that was dumped out, extra asphalt there and everything else? Again, now you're eliminating even more of these parking areas at that particular time.
That was the gas company. That's not the way Mass Highway's contractors work.
So who controls all this project?
Construction would be administered by Mastop. We'll have a resident engineer and some assistant resident engineers out there. And that sort of behavior is forbidden. The contractor is obligated to find their own laydown area that's acceptable to the community and Mastop.
Okay, so that's going to be taken care of. They're not going to be in, only in that area?
They do the work, but we run the show. And so that's a great comment, by the way.
Okay, that's just something I noticed in the small part of the project that was going on right through the summertime. The other question I have, I've seen in many towns, and I think this gentleman over here says something about crosswalks. Are the crosswalks individual pavers or are they a solid stamped surface?
The idea would be is that we would grind out like an inch and a half of the existing paper or the new paper and then we would put down some, state of the art these days is an epoxy that solidifies. And as it's getting harder, you can stamp an imprint of, say, a brick.
So to answer your question, it's a solid.
It sounds like a solid, okay.
Made to look like.
One at a time, gentlemen, please, one at a time. Seen many times that these pavers are starting to lift. You're coming down that hill like that gentleman said. Now you're pushing everything down the hill. That's going to create a...
That won't happen with this treatment. And that's why they use it now.
Okay, that's all I have.
But it looks like brick. It's actually quite attractive. Thanks a lot. How about anybody else?
Yeah, it's an easy one. Ralphex, H-I-C-K-S. I believe you did a similar project like this in Westminster that ended about a year ago, am I right?
I defer to Arthur, who would know. Westminster?
I'm the superintendent of schools there and I dealt with DOT.
School Street.
Couple of issues and it kind of came out beautiful. And I'm happy this is being looked at and hopefully will go forward. But I do want to mention that you do need to take into account the needs of the business people. Because it will be no good if we have a beautiful roadway and sidewalks and a little greenway and the businesses are boarded up and nobody's in there because they can't support themselves. So I think it's a great project, but see what you can do to try and maintain as much parking as you possibly can. I'm psyched about it. I was a former selectman in town. I've wanted this done for years. I'm glad this looks like it's finally coming to fruition, but let's do it right. Thank you very much.
Thanks very much. It will be nice when it's done. I think it'll be pretty pretty with the historic buildings, the old facades and the random roadway and sidewalks. Anybody else?
One more? You can take me after or before, whatever you want to do.
He's already had a shot, so let's go first.
My name is Steven Tyler. I'm the utilities and facilities superintendent here in Spencer. And I am also a resident of Spencer. I live on R. Jones Road. I've lived here about four years. I was also the engineering project manager for the Maple Street project when that was designed in the early 2000s and built by Mast DOT in 2007 to 2008. So I do have about 10 to 15 years' experience with at least downtown and downtown center, Route 31, Main Street and those things. Just a couple of things just for thought of the people here tonight and anyone else that might read the record or watches on video. Just want to remind everyone that we did have the June 2012 concept design review meetings where we had, I think, around 40 people showed up. A decent percentage of the people that are in this room tonight were here tonight, or excuse me, were here then. And that was where we focused on the business owners and we showed them the three concept designs. One was for roundabout at that location and one was for actually leaving that location the way it is now. The design that had the least amount of parking impacts was this one. The one that had the most was the one that leaving it the way it is now. And that's because there's other issues at those intersections with regard to safety and turning movements and so forth for trucks. Those intersections are basically, when I'm talking about intersections, I'm talking about the Wall Street Pleasant Street intersection. That's really two intersections side by side. That's what we call two offset T-intersections. And that's one of the cores of this project that's making it eligible for the funding, the fact that we turn that into one intersection. And that then allows us to improve traffic operations, which makes it eligible for air quality money. And then the other things where we have safety improvements and so forth. The island in the middle of Pleasant Street is a harborage for pedestrians because pedestrians don't have a cycle to get them all the way across that. And then they could go either direction. So you're going from one corner, you could be going across Pleasant Street or you could be going across Main Street. That island is for pedestrian's safety. That island, that's what that island is there for because there's going to be pedestrians harboring out in the middle of that intersection. The turning movements, there are real hazards with the turning movements. If any of you have seen a truck trying to take, going westbound and trying to take a right turn on Pleasant Street, that building is right on the corner. They can sometimes be there stopped for a half an hour just waiting for the opportunity to squeeze their truck into every lane on that street to make a turn. And I'm sure some of you have seen it and it's amazing that it even gets done. So the truck can free and make that turn. The truck does not have to swing wide to make the turn on this design. That design works.
Both directions, right?
Both directions. Inside your designated lane, you do not have to cross into the other lane to make the turning movement from either direction. Other comment to speak to. I apologize for the national grid gas. I did not know that was a concern up in that parking lot. If someone had brought that to my attention, I would have asked them to move. Their laydown area was not that spot. They were designated a laydown area behind town. So you can notify our office if you feel like those encroachments on your needs and stuff are taking place. I would have no problem telling them to move their equipment out of that location. From my perspective, it was a bad time of year and they were still doing it earlier this week. I was trying to put them in a position where they could get out of town as quickly as possible. And so I did not go down and tell them to move their vehicles because I didn't have any feedback like what I'm hearing here tonight. The other comment I, the other point I wanted to make was with regard to the design. And I think there's one design question I hear over and over again and I don't know if it's possible if Mass Highway can answer it tonight in greater detail or in the future. But the comment is coming up a lot all through the process, two, three years, going back 10 years ago when we first started talking about this project, concrete. You know, I have, from experience of what the answers are to concrete, I know some of them myself, but I don't know the details of how VHB and the Mast DOT pavement design section came to that. And I do know that there are some issues in that the pavement out there right now, correct me, Brian, please, is it 14 inches thick?
Some issues, it's very thick, yes.
And that's a lot of pavement to move out, so that's a cost in itself. And then other issues I know that there are with concrete is just the fact that it is susceptible to salt and it is susceptible to deterioration. And it's not something you can just mill and repave over like you can with bituminous. So concrete becomes very expensive in the future when it comes time to redo it. And this situation is difficult to work with in that you're on a hill. And so concrete is hard to grade into a cross slope and all that type of stuff like what you do on a road versus what you might do on a slab or a floor or something like that. So just from the perspective of a general design question I feel like the town has is just trying to, let's try to get the concrete answer behind as if we can sometime between 25 and 50%. So that's my questions or comments with regard to the DPW person. But I have one more with regard to a resident of the town of Spencer. I agree totally. The businesses should be considered and they're key. That's what the downtown's for, the businesses and operation and the community. But there are a lot of benefits to the businesses from this project. There is a few loss of parking spaces and I understand that. But I think overall, there's an overall improvement to the downtown center and hopefully a situation where people get drawn in. The parking situation in Spencer, in my opinion, as a resident and as an engineer, is greater than five or six or seven spaces. In the master plan, 15 years ago, when I identified that the town of Spencer needed to find parking, and that's something that's on Spencer to try to find. Trying to find the parking and whether or not they build a garage or a lot or something like that, that's not up to this project. This project is a roadway project and this project, while it's doing the best that it can to minimize parking losses, I think the answer for downtown is greater than, I'll say, a half a dozen parking spaces going into the future. And then if I go back to the, my other position as a position in the town role, we can't speak to what's going on with the existing parking lot because the town doesn't own that. The parking lot that's over there in the bank property is owned by a third party. It's owned by the same person that owns the Santander Bank Lot and he leases that to the town at a zero cost. So ultimately, it's his decision. And some of the things that I'm not able to answer because I'm kind of restricted with regard to doing my right-of-way negotiations. I can't do that until I get a sign-off on the environmental. And I just found out tonight that hasn't happened yet. So there's things that I still can't do or investigate to find out the answer to some of these questions. So, and anytime before, after this meeting, you can always reach out to my office. We have the website, which is in these materials somewhere. And you can email me and we'll respond as quickly and efficiently as we can. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Steve. I have a stack of business cards here too. And I will make them accessible to anybody who wants one. So you can reach out directly to me. I'll put you in touch with anybody you want to speak with. My job is to be sort of a focal point to distribute questions and information. So I'll leave them here. Would you like them? Oh, you have a comment? Yeah, hang on just a second. Walter will kill me if I don't...
Dan Lapierre, Spencer Autobody, L-A-P-I-E-R-R-E. How much of the sidewalk are the moves in front of the building? I know you said like right here, you're narrowing the sidewalk here?
No, actually, it stays the same width, I believe.
I thought it was going to narrow.
It's a two-tier with a ramp. The only modification is it'll all be brand new and this will be accessible to mobility challenges.
Do we know loss about a sidewalk?
No. Tom, there will be a loss of about two feet.
Two feet? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. On this pole.
And then the other question I have too is if you send a brochure up with trees and stuff like that.
They're gray strictly.
Yeah, well, you're showing like trees in front of everything, like on the sidewalk. You like to put a couple of trees here or there or on that last thing that was shown. You're going to be putting trees down on the sidewalks?
I don't see any shown here now, but...
No, I'm just saying on things that were sent.
No trees envisioned, any trees?
Can I speak to that?
We can certainly look at that, but I think that there are some issues as far as space.
Oh, yeah.
Maintenance. Whether or not they're actually going to take and grow.
Well, no, I just wanted to bring it up because, I mean, it would've been so close to even my windows and like, and my driveway is like right here, right on top of Route 9.
Well, you certainly wouldn't put one there. Because you don't want...
No, I just wanted to bring it because, I mean, even when all this construction starts, like even when the gas company was down pulling everything up, they were in front of my door for over a day. I couldn't get in and out without like having the officer that helped me to get in and out of my garage, which no one even let me know that they were going to be there. So I couldn't reschedule cars to, you know, the following day. So I had no clue. If at a day noticed that, call my customers, say, oh, someone's backpacking lot or whatever because some of my customers are elderly.
We don't operate that way.
No, no, I understand that, but I just wanted to know what happened. But I mean, and all that stuff there, but I mean, even when they start doing the, you know, start digging the road and all that stuff there, what's going to end up happening like, you know, one lane one way and another lane the other way? There'll be no parking whatsoever for a while.
Let me ask Brian. He can answer this question, how we're going to handle stage construction here.
I think it's a little too late. I think that at the very least...
You'll be able to maintain a lane in each direction, right?
We would hope to. We would hope to. But like you said, the bad news is that you may need to lose all the parking that's out there temporarily, while some of it, and like I said, in a way that project would work is that they probably wouldn't build it all from start to finish all in one leg. They'd probably take it in sections. They'd probably take it in blocks. So that, like I said, maybe you do the work from Elm to Wall first, then you go from Wall, maybe the mechanic, the mechanic to Maple. You do one side, then you do the other side. So, you know, we understand that it's commercial downtown area and that the businesses have to be accessed and that's something that's a criteria that Mast DOT states all the time that you have to maintain access to business. I think the one thing that may be a little bit detrimental to you is that, I mean, you do have to pull concrete and that concrete has to set.
No, I understand that. I understand that.
But I think from a sequencing standpoint, and I don't want to talk for the concrete, but like I said, I think there's a way we can work this out.
Well, even like the concrete being put, I understand all that there. Like even like on the main construction when they have all the homeless dug up, like even Federated next door, the cars have no place, they have no place to pull up. So they, you know, they use a sidewalk to get in and out and traffic going back and forth and all that stuff there. But I mean, is there any way of doing some of this at night so it doesn't totally kill us? Because that would kill us.
That's a very good point.
I mean, some of it. I know you can't do all of it.
Pointing to these lovely ladies behind you that mentioned the very same thing before the meeting, that they'd like to see a lot of the construction work done at night. I'm staring at Arthur.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was writing, making a note. So certainly, I think as you advance the design, as part of, part of the design is doing construction staging. And that's looking at how you're going to stage it and keep all the traffic moving through there and what the logistics are. So as part of that, we can look at night work and, you know, I also turn back to the town and I'm looking at various town figures around here because as soon as you do night work, you're going to hear from your residents downtown too. So, you know, it solves some issues, but it doesn't solve everything. So I think, so the answer is we'll have to evaluate that as we go forward and see whether it's feasible to do it and whether it makes sense to do it and whether it saves time.
The concern is that people are living downtown and I hear this all night long.
Here, there are a lot of traffic anyways, all night long, too.
So they're not sleeping.
It's not the point. This is a little amount of time versus if you put every small business out of business when this happens. You know what I mean? It's like if you can just, if you diversify it a little bit here, a little bit there, on and off, and just work with everybody, it'd be a little easier on everybody.
Well, listen, these are great comments and stuff that VHB has to take into account when they come up with a construction staging plan so that it minimizes the negative impacts to all of the businesses downtown. I know how sensitive a slight disruption is. You know how sensitive a slight disruption is to a small business? And so, we're sensitive to that. There's not going to be no disruption. I wish I could say that there would be none, but.
Well, I love the idea. I like the concept of it. Everything's looking brand-new and clean. This, I understand this, but I don't, I mean, I, I mean, I think it could be a different design, maybe. I don't know, but it, Spencer, something needs to be done in Spencer. I know that. But what minimal damage to businesses.
Right. And maybe night work is the answer. We'll take a look, and we'll have to get with the town officials and see what they think. That's a great comment. Thanks.
Tom, just going back, I wanted to address something that Steve brought up before in terms of concrete and what was, like, I guess the first question is, is what is the interest in having concrete there?
And I think the comment we get over and over again is the fear or belief that it's going to continue to shove in front of Main Street. And any from probably down in front of the Suckin' Building.
And I think that makes sense for us to really to take a look in terms of the pavement design and what the layers, have you done cores?
Yes.
Okay. And so, doing cores, and we would look for, on some of the pavements, when you have a sand layer down, then you create a slip plane. So, you, with heavy trucks starting out on a steep grade, you'll get the pavement tearing, you'll lose the adhesion. So, I don't know whether, you know, as far as concrete, there's pluses and minuses to concrete. We did it in Spencer, Route 31, it was brought up by, I'm sorry, excuse, in Charlton, Route 20 at Route 31. But that was a steep downgrade. We had trucks going through the signalized intersection at the bottom of that. That pavement alone, the section we did, I think then, which was maybe 15 years ago, was a million-dollar piece of pavement alone for that short stretch. And it's a, so in that case, we did use it because we had tremendous issues with trucks skidding through the intersection. But it does present, long-term, anytime you have utility cuts, it makes it extremely difficult to cut the pavement to access utilities underneath. So, there's, there's pluses and minuses, and also with constructability issues, pouring concrete, and then the time it takes for it to cure makes it, construction, much more complicated. So, it's, it's, you know, as.
It's tough.
It's, yeah, it's not an easy solution.
Modern pavement mixes, Arthur, right? Modern mixes, the current mixes we're using, the superpave mixes, have a better balance of aggregate and bituminous materials so that there's less shoveability, if you will. Everything locks together a little better than it used to.
Was it three, three years ago we went to, three or four years ago, we went to superpave mix designs? So, now, in the contracts, there's incentive for the contractor. They get, they make more money if they do a good job. You get a good, smooth pavement, and they meet the gradation and the compaction requirements. So, it's, it's, there's been a big difference in the quality of work that we see out there because the contractors make more money when they do a good job, so.
And we get a better pavement.
And we get a better pavement. So, hopefully, we've gotten beyond some of the poor pavements, poorer pavements we had in the past.
The mix designs are designed per project, so they customize the mix for its location. And if this is apt to be shoved, they're susceptible to shoving because of the grade and the heavy loads, then we can design it accordingly.
And by the way, for the record, I'm.
Sorry, what?
I'm sorry. By the, I'm Arthur Frost. Did I give you my name when I started?
That's okay.
All right.
I'm going to put that one down and talk into this one as I carry over.
Oops. All right. I've lost you.
Hi, thanks. Michael Toney.
Please spell your last name.
T O O M E Y.
Thank you.
Quick question. On the eastbound traffic, will the eastbound lanes still be allowed a left onto the shopping plaza in this scenario? Because the way with the bike lane now, it looks as though that could be a bottleneck where all the design on 31 and Pleasant with Nine gets negated because of the fact that if they have one car stopped because a car's coming westbound, yeah, all right, you're trying to make a left into that plaza.
In here.
Yeah. And all that just backs up. I've been stuck there a couple times.
Right here. So, if there's a car waiting to take a right into here.
No, no. I think east.
Coming east, making a left, I see. So, you'd like to see three lanes here.
Well, my question is not so much the three lanes, but is there going to be any thought of making it an exclusion, you know, or, you know, what are the scenarios and possibilities? I think that should be explored.
Denying lefts, eastbound lefts, prohibiting that movement into the lot?
The question is, is that, you know, what's being thought of there? You know, is it that they'd all go up Pleasant Street to make that turn into it, or what would be the scenario?
Have you guys done counts there?
We have done counts there, and I think some of the.
I'm sorry, Brian, start that again.
We have done counts there, and I know some of the things that we were looking at as a possibility. We were talking more, we were looking more about what the driveway accesses were. I mean, I think right now we have an in and an out, which is what they have now. I think we had talked about probably restricting left turn onlys, left turn onlys at those driveways, or possibly consolidating those driveways to help out with what's going on on the roadway. Because I understand the gentleman's point about the idea of trying to take a left-hand turn off Main Street into the Price Chopper. It can get bottlenecked there.
So, right in, right out?
Like I said, those were, those were options that we looked at, but as it stands right now, we are maintaining the status quo as what's going on with those driveways now.
But maybe it's worth another look, based on Mr. Toney's comment.
It's certainly worth another look.
Yeah. There's not a lot of extra width there that you could fit in.
No, and I think that's part of the problem, too, is that there isn't enough width there to provide the extra lane that, you know, could be worn. So, that's why we kind of looked at it from the backside and said, okay, what could possibly improvement could be made from the driveway side rather than from the roadway side?
Right.
The only reason I'm mentioning that is that if you have someone doing that on a consistent basis, then everything else backs up all the way down, everything that you see in sight. And it also backs up everything that you see in sight. No, the other way, up on Pleasant Street. It'll back Pleasant Street all, yeah, it backs up right to the bank.
The other thing, too, Tom, to keep in mind, was that, you know, some of the thought behind doing the improvements to the signals is that they could open up some gaps in the traffic. So, instead of it being one long line of traffic coming and going down.
Come packets.
It's going to pack, so that the idea of someone trying to make that maneuver from Main Street into the, into the Price Chopper, that there may be better opportunities for gaps to get in there quicker rather than having to wait.
Right.
We can sort of, we can sort of look back into that again.
Yep.
Second part, has anybody checked to see if there's still rails under the roadway? Because there used to be a trolley there, I believe? And is that affecting some of the adhesion on the, you know, underlayment?
Interesting question.
We've done corrings, and we've found 14 inches of pavement.
Wow. I'm just wondering if it's around that, you know.
We haven't done digging randomly, looking for rails.
Okay. Final point. Based on this scenario and recent concerns, where will you put the snow in this scenario? Where would you plow this thing? If you had to plow 12 inches of snow today, where would you go with that snow right now in that scenario?
We're not generating any extra impervious surface here. This is, where do you put it today?
That's the only.
Mr. DPW, where are you?
This really doesn't change, conditions as far as plowing and so forth goes. When the plow, when the snow starts to build up and becomes an encumbrance to parking and businesses in the sidewalks, then we have to come out and we haul it out.
Wow, okay.
Which don't happen often.
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't happen often. There's a lot of things in town in Spencer that are underfunded.
And so, people can't get into the business.
Excuse me, if you're not holding the mic, I cannot hear you.
Okay, Walter. The lady said that the snow hauling doesn't occur often enough, and people have trouble getting into the businesses on Main Street. And I'm sure you get your share of snow up here in Spencer. I just hope the temperature stays above freezing tonight, when it's time to go home. But, yeah, one point to make is that the pavement surface isn't increased by this design. It's, in fact, it's decreased a little bit, maybe.
It's probably increased just a little bit. Like I said earlier, Tom, there's a little bit of widening down by the, between elm and wall. Like I said, there's a two-foot strip that we're widening.
Oh, right, right.
Then just at the intersection with Maple, there's a little realignment there, but there's just a sliver of widening. So, you are, you are correct. I mean, there really is no additional impervious area created as part of the realignment.
Yes, Mr. Lundquist?
I couldn't, I have a follow-up question to what Mr. Tyler says. You talk about trucks on Pleasant Street. There's a lot of trucks that turn at Conblens onto Main Street. They took out a couple of poles. How are you going to address that? They have to swing way over onto Maple Street to make the turn down.
Get out of your way initially.
Over the top of the hill there.
Oh, up there?
Yeah, up there, right. Keep going, right there.
Yeah. And you said coming out of Maple?
No, going down Maple from Main Street, coming up the hill.
Up the hill.
Yeah.
Going eastbound.
Up the center of town.
That turn right there.
Right, opposite way, going.
On Route Nine, Main Street, heading to the east.
Going east on Main Street.
East on Main Street.
Right here, and they turn here.
Okay.
They turn here.
Well, they see that radius there is very friendly to a truck. That looks like it's actually, no, it's, we've increased the radius here. The existing curb is a tighter turn.
But you've got telephone poles right in the corner. They just put a new one up there this spring where.
They're in the back of the sidewalk now, the, we see the poles.
But you haven't changed the radius to make it any easier for trucks to go down Maple Street. All you did was put the poles up there, and they hit all the time.
The new curb alignment has a bigger radius, so it'll be easier.
Thank you.
Yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm misspeaking, let me.
Again, as far as the realignment at that intersection, you are correct. We are increasing the radius from going Main Street eastbound to Maple Street southbound. And again, where the poles are now, again, as I said before, they will be relocated so that they are, there will be no impediments.
Yeah.
To turning vehicles or ADA handicap poles, so. And again, we'll be, we'll be still working on with the utility companies as far as where the actual final pole cases will pay for.
We now have a, we have a new policy now with our utility coordination. We provide them a financial incentive to get their stuff out of our way once we agree on a design with them and a price to move their things out of our way. We'll participate up to 50% as long as they adhere to the construction schedule. Because as we've all experienced in the past, we've seen beautiful roadwork done with the utility poles in the right-hand lane, you know, in the pavement until they get them out of the way. So, to prohibit that in the future, we offer them a financial incentive if they adhere to the schedule. So, we do an extensive amount of coordination. That's what Ross Goodell here, this young fellow right in front, he works with all the utility companies. We meet out here more than once. We go through every utility pole, every guide wire, and figure out where it's going to go. And so, we also clear the sidewalks to make a clear path for pedestrians and people who are mobility-challenged, get all that street furniture out of the way, which, you know, will enhance somewhat your customer access. These are all great comments. We're getting a lot of good comments, a lot of good concerns that we might not otherwise think of. So, it's important that you speak up. Now, you mentioned night work, for instance. That's a great comment. We'll see if we can do that, get as much work out of business hours as possible. There's always a balance between people who live in a residential area, you know, who can't really bang away with jackhammers and things like that, if people live there. But we'll do our best to figure. Does anybody else have anything to say besides me? Let me, let me.
James Will, East School Street. I apologize for speaking again, but there's a point that I had to make earlier, and it's come up a few times regarding parking. The planning board is currently in receipt of a document from the CMR PC, which is the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. They have identified between five or six different possible sites to enhance parking in the town center. Some of them do include a little bit of walking, but we're considering all of our options. Some of them are a little bit closer to where the businesses are, some of them are a little further away.
I want to do your.
We're just still exploring all of that. That document's available. Feel free to ask the inspection office for a copy of that. If they don't have it, just tell them to email me, and I can email you or bring it to your house, whatever works easier for you. Thanks.
Great. Well, since you mentioned that, there's a little bit of information Steve wants to mention, and I think he's got a stack of forms in the back on the table back there. Maybe you want to jump in?
Yes, on a separate matter, I'll ask for everyone's help with the survey that's going on in our region. Adam, do you mind helping for a minute in picking up one of those papers? We actually can pick up the whole stack, maybe hand it out if anyone wants to get it. This is a survey called the Mobility 2040 Survey, and this is a survey that's being done by our central regional staff, CMR PC, one of them that happens to be in the audience tonight. And the important part on that piece of paper is the website. They're doing this online survey, and what this is doing is, this is going to go to the NPO, and the NPO is one of the groups that meet and makes decisions on which projects are funded. And it's information that's going to be used to help make decisions for projects in the next 20 or so years. I'm told that only one person in Spencer has filled out the survey, and I guess there's two then.
We could do better.
And it's really important to us if we can get our voice heard. And if you go on this survey, there's going to be open-ended questions where you can speak about projects that are of importance to you. That could be this project, that could be Route 31 South, Charlton Road, that could be anything that's of importance to you. It would be valuable to Spencer for us to get as much as our input on here as we can. Other towns are commenting, and their input is there, and it's going to have numbers. So, if you, if anyone has time and interest, please go online to that website, and please take that survey. And I do want to make one other clarification because we, we here in Spencer, we have two projects going on in parallel that, talking about Main Street. We have this Main Street roadway project, and then we have the downtown revitalization project. And that, the second one, the downtown revitalization project, is a study. Someone in here referenced the plan with all the trees on it. That keeps it cropping up during the revitalization study, and that's when you're seeing this plan with all the streetscape trees on it. That plan was done, I think in 2006 by a landscape architect, and they just plopped trees everywhere. And a lot of, and we did look at that at the very beginning of this project. There's, there's little opportunity for trees on this project because all, many of the places where he showed, where trees were shown on that other plan, there's some utility or something right underneath where that tree would be. All down the north side sidewalk, there's fiber optic underneath the sidewalk. It's very tight on the south side already. And one of the concerns we have is the livability of a tree, and then what are we going to do with the tree that we plant in five years, and then we cut it down? Now we have a hole where a tree was and a gap in the sidewalk. I think some of you have seen that. So, we're looking more towards streetscape and planter-type elements that can come and go during the winter season, and we're looking at putting that type of stuff in areas where and we're looking at putting that type of stuff in areas where we have room, where we don't impede pedestrians. And then the other issue with trees are salt from winter and just the damages they're probably going to incur during snow removal on the streets and the sidewalks. And thank you all for coming.
Anyone else? Yes, sir, great.
My name is Barry White, W-H-I-T-E. I just want to know if this project is going through, when it's going to start? Like, what's the month that it will be going, like May to November or?
Walter's got me spinning my wheels. We hope to advertise it in early spring of 2016. We would hope to have a contract award, that's an awkward time to advertise.
I think.
Let's try and move it back towards winter of, like, January.
Your hopes aren't as high as mine, Tom.
Easy, easy, easy. Brian can do it, Amanda can do it. And then we have an award, we typically, it takes about 120 days from advertise.
The biggest thing is town meeting, because there's temporary rights that are needed for the right-of-way. So it depends on.
They're going to have more than one of those between now and.
Well, there's an annual town meeting. Do you have one town meeting a year where you would?
Usually have two, one in May and then one in the fall.
Okay, so.
We've got five months right away, plans in six months, yeah.
I would say next, next fall, if the right-of-way was, would be ready, I think it'd be ready by then for a town meeting to act on the right-of-way. So then that would mean advertisement should, could occur in the spring and then construction in the spring of 2016.
So we could start.
And I'm putting words in, I'm looking at the designers, because I've just made their schedule.
But then the other thing to keep in mind too is that, I was, I was saying something around here, Arthur. Are we thinking this is a two-construction season? I think it's going to take more than one.
Yeah. I think, I think I have two years to be down here. Because you have the winter shutdown. What Arthur's referring to is, once we finalize right-of-way plans, which don't occur instantly, we have to get the design locked in, identify the right-of-way requirements perfectly, and then it's six to nine months.
I would, I would say next, next fall's town meeting, we should be, we should be ready for right-of-way takings.
Let me write this down, Arthur.
Dan Lapierre, Spencer Alavotti. Is there any, like, prep work, like, come spring or anything like that there that we don't know what's going to be happening? Like the gas line, Alex, I didn't have any idea. But I'm just saying, is there any other prep work coming, like, this spring into summer?
As far as the construction affiliated with this project, I don't know about private utility companies and what they're up to. But when we do a project, there's lots of advance warning. We have a resident engineer who works with a contractor on a daily basis. He has lots of support back in the district office, and everything is announced ahead of time. You'll have plenty of advance warning. You'll know what's going to occur next before it happens, especially with a downtown environment like this with lots of storefronts. He can be right there talking to everybody every day. Anybody who has any questions can go find him and get your concerns met. So what occurred recently with the gas company, we worked very hard to not happen on our projects.
No, I understand, I just didn't know. For next summer.
Next summer, we won't be out here, I don't think.
I think he's asking me.
That damn gas.
Son of a gun.
The answer is, honestly, not that I know of. I think we've taken care of everything underneath Main Street. And with regard to the gas, I have been dealing with the national grid gas since I've been here, trying to lay everything out and know what they're doing, when they're doing it, and knowing in advance we were going to do the gas next year. And then all of a sudden, they wanted to do it this year. And, you know, with the way the gas company is and knowing this project's coming up, I wanted them to get in and out. So if they're ready to do it this year, and so it was without notice, and I apologize for that. But we try to do a better job than that.
Well, no, they were very quick. They were very quick in and out. They were quick. It's just, no, it was just a, you know, a sideboard, that's all.
There's no known separate utility issue to take care of in advance of this project? Not to say that there might be a leak or something else come up or something that we didn't have, but essentially, the infrastructure under there is in very good condition. The main thing that needs to still be addressed is the sewer, and we'll try to address that with this project. And sewer would be more of a relining and maybe some services to all the downtown businesses. So that's all the downtown properties. So that, you'll be looking for something coming from the sewer here in the next six or eight months.
Town sewer.
Town sewer, correct.
And you want to reline that during this work?
Yes, we will probably do some non-participating sewer work underneath this contract.
Okay, now we're getting down to it.
I honestly, potentially, this project, an answer to when? I'd like to time this project to where we can put it in a situation where it could start construction at the beginning of the season, because we do have two construction seasons. If everything lines up perfectly, we could potentially see April of next year. Still the 2016 tip year.
Not next year.
Yes, yes, 2016. I'm saying 2016, but I'm saying next year. 2016.
April next year is all by once away.
Let's go with the year. April of 2016. If everything lines up perfectly, and then if we have either right-of-way delays, utility, former construction, you know, one of the things that's difficult with regard to utility is, how do we relocate the utilities on Pleasant Street and build the new Pleasant Street and keep the old Pleasant Street open?
Yeah, it's tough.
You're not going to.
So there are, there are phase issues to be resolved. And so my answer to your question on time, April 2016 or April 2017?
Is that the same with the sidewalk construction? Is that going to be like the second season or is that, hold on, is that going to take?
Well, they don't, they, it would work, you know.
It's all one project and would be up to the contractor. They typically go from the curving out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess if I, I mean, I'm just looking, as far as construction staging, I don't know what you have elevation-wise in the sidewalks, whether that would be some of the first work done or whether that would come later in the phase. And there's some of it that we determined upfront in working through the plans, and then there's another part of it. Once the contract has been awarded to a contractor, been awarded, then they come up with a schedule. So the town's invited to the pre-construction conference, and there the contractor will submit a schedule, and we'd have a better idea. We can create a plan upfront, but once the contractor looks at it, he may look at it and say, I can do this faster and for less money if I do phase it in a certain way, and he'll propose his own phasing.
We'll have to leave them that freedom because it's more cost-effective. If, the more restrictions we apply to the contractor, the higher the price. However, if there's a necessity, I mean, we don't leave things to their discretion if we see a need to have it done a certain way.
We have to look at it upfront and during the design phase to make sure that it's constructible. And so we come up with a phase of operations that we can construct in a given situation. But then, once the contractor gets the project, then he may come up with a different phasing, and then we have to agree to that.
So if they have a better way of doing it, we allow them that option. But in general, I believe that the contractors do the full-depth work first to create more space. So for instance, they might attack this first, maybe this, and they do this in phases somehow. But that allows them to then move traffic onto the new area that they've created and pull it off of where they have to rebuild. So it's a big exercise in shifting, as we all know, traffic out of the way where they want to work.
And keep in mind that the way we have it now, if they're going to go out there and they're going to, based on the design we have now for the pavement, they're going to grind down a number of inches of the existing asphalt and they would come back and they would repave. We're not doing a whole lot of this called full-depth reconstruction, where we're digging up the entire roadway. All we're doing is taking off the top layer of the asphalt, putting a new layer on top of the existing. So the amount of time that's worked in the roadway, from a roadway standpoint, to build a new pavement, shouldn't take all that long. I think what you're going to find is, your toughest or your longest, your longest effort of work is going to be all the sidewalk.
Yeah. So they'd set the curbs first, the new curb location, and then they'd come back and put the blocking surface down. The dark gray areas are the full-depth areas, and the lighter gray are the mill and pave areas. Anybody else with questions, comments, criticism? Yes, sir. Let me get you a microphone, so I don't.
I got you.
He's a tough taskmaster, this guy.
Al Collet, it was only Board of Appeals, that's C-O-L-L-E-T-E.
Thank you.
I'd just like to mention the access to the village parking area.
There or?
No, right there, right here. Yes, we, when Price Drop came in front of us for the additional space, the western entrance, we conditioned that to a right-only.
Oh, right in, right out?
Right out.
Right out only, so that's only an entry.
And my question is, if somebody's coming up, it's a problem now. If somebody's coming up heading east on Main Street to take a left in the parking area, if there's nobody to let them in, it just, it just creates a bottleneck.
Take a picture.
And come and. It, you're going to have a dedicated left lane to go onto Pleasant Street, correct? Heading east?
Yes, we have. Dedicated right turn to. Oh, it's heading east, yeah, we have this left turn pocket, correct?
Okay. Just from my experience, it might be a good idea, and you don't have to look into that, but to have people from heading west, I mean, heading east, go on Pleasant Street, go into the park, go into Shoppers Village that way. I invite.
Mr. Collet, what was that again? You want to come in that way?
Use your mic, yeah. Yeah, my question is, yeah, you're going to have a dedicated lane going from Route 9 east onto Pleasant Street, correct?
Right, it's right there, yes.
And.
You'd like to see the same thing here?
No, I'd like this, there's no dedicated lane, in other words, somebody taking a left-hand turn into Shoppers Village coming from the west is going to just stop all the traffic.
Right.
So it might be a good idea to have the traffic go into the Shoppers Village from that dedicated left-hand lane heading east.
I think what he's talking about, Tom, is that there is also an entrance into the Price Chopper parking area from Pleasant Street. So that is, I assume you knew that.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't. I apologize. I see.
My other question would be, how many cars can you stack up in that left-hand?
You're saying this, here, and then in here?
Right, that's correct.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, no, it's all right, I misunderstood.
So then my next question would be, how many, how many cars can you stack in that left-hand lane before you get into the intersection of High Street?
Over here?
That's correct.
Gentlemen, ladies? Five. I'm getting the five sign. Five or six, maybe.
I don't know if that'd be a problem, but.
Yeah, at least five, I would say. Maybe six. 20 feet per car? Yeah. Well, that's five per 100. It's a little over 100 feet long.
Not that it matters, Tom, but the heaviest, the heaviest two movements that we found from doing the traffic council, doing the analysis, is going from Maple Street northbound to Main Street westbound, to Pleasant Street northbound. And then it's the same in the opposite direction. So that's a heavy, it's one of the heavy movements, and the other one's going in the opposite direction.
Is it a commuter, like a to-and-from work kind of thing?
It's Route 31.
Oh, Route 31.
So I'm not minimizing the fact that we have, we have stacking to go from Main Street to take a left on Pleasant, and we have, you know, stacking ability for five or six cars there. I'm sorry, I guess my point is that that's not the heaviest movement, not that that's an excuse, but I mean, we have some stacking there.
Should be sufficient, yeah.
Yeah.
Based on your analysis, yeah. Got you.
If I may respond to Mr. Collet, I think that's an excellent idea. We can probably, at the very least, include some wayfinding signs and see how that works. And then if the town wants to consider restricting left turns, that could be done at any time. It doesn't need to be part of this project, where we could start trying to get people to make that movement in that way.
I think it's a good, I think it's a good idea. The only thing is, you have to be able to stack up enough cars to make it work. That would be something they'd have to work out.
Who wants to take that microphone from Mr. Collet? Anybody have another comment? This gentleman right here.
My name is Don McCair, L.A., C.A., I.R.E. Are all the electrical wires going to be put on the ground?
No. They'll remain, everything that's up there now will remain. If they're relocating and there's abandoned line up there, they'll probably take that down, but we have no plans to underground it. That actually is a very expensive process and would have to be borne by the ratepayers in town. That's not something Mastop will participate in because it's, it's an enhancement. We'll participate in the relocation to get it out of the way of our work, but that doesn't have to mean, unless there's no other way to build it other than to bury it, then we'll participate. But in answer to your question, there were no plans to do that.
Why does it have to take two years? That's not a very big project. Why can't it be done in one season?
It's our experience that it would take, you know, there'd be at least some punchless stuff in the second season, I mean, the second year.
Maybe punchless, but I mean.
The substantial work can be done.
Disrupting the whole town, this is the main drag rate through town. Disrupt the whole town for two years, you know, something like that. And basically, it's not going to make much difference. You're going to have new pavement, you're going to have new lines in the road, you're going to redo sidewalks, make some pretty crosswalks. Basically, you're going to have what you've got now, there's no room, unless you're going to tear buildings down or.
Yeah, which we're not in the business of doing.
Pardon?
We're not in the business of buying buildings and knocking them down.
No, see, really not going to change anything.
Well, we think there's a net big enhancement by all the little improvements. There's portions of the sidewalk that are now two, two levels are going to be one level. We're adding left turn pockets, we're realigning Pleasant with Wall.
There is a left turn pocket down there now.
We're adding bike accommodation in the shoulders, new signal equipment, like you say, some cosmetic improvements. I think all that adds up to a substantial improvement.
Yeah, for $3 million, it's not going to make a big difference.
So you don't want to see it done?
No, I think it's a waste of money. I think we could use the $3 million a lot of other places. It would be more useful with this.
That's a good comment.
I will add that the road is going to need to be redone at some point in time, and this way, at least, the state pays for it and we don't. So we are welcome to ask the state to step away and come up with one or $2 million ourselves and do it in whatever way we want, and there's still going to be disturbances. With regard to the time, we're just predicting through experience, two years. The contractor wants to get it done as fast as he possibly can. That's how he's going to make more money. And believe me, the relocation of Pleasant Street is not a little project.
Because they can't just shut down downtown and tear it up. They have to, you know, do it in stage construction fashion. But that's a great comment, and that's why we're here. We're here, the good and the bad. If you don't like it, that's, I'm glad you spoke up. Anybody else? Thumbs up, thumbs down, sideways? Nothing? There's a gentleman, all right. Get everybody's pocket.
Jonathan Diner, V.I.N.E.R., the Spencer Planning Board. The question, all the right-of-way takings, is this going to remain Town Spencer? Or is it going to be Masto T?
Town of Spencer.
It will be?
Yeah.
This, all this green area, this is going to be a taking?
We already own it, that's the old road.
Yeah, where the new road is, is.
All right. And the right turn lane right here, we're losing, are we losing stacking there?
Yes.
From the existing?
Yes.
And is that, that's going to be an issue or no?
There's not a lot of right turns, and that was kind of something we needed to do to accommodate some of the other requirements of the cross-section.
That's the truck movement thing, right? The building's right on the corner?
Yes, the new, the radius does make it more friendlier to trucks, but there is, there is a right turn, designated right turn lane there now that has a longer, has a longer queue length.
Yeah, it's all good.
But, anything else?
Oh, Mr. Colette.
Is that going to be a yield?
He's going to kill me if I don't give this to him. Sorry, it's a big fan. I feel that's a little-
Is the right-hand turn going to be a yield once you get into the turn?
Yeah, that's a question that's coming. It is, yield.
So that's what he was referring to, is the stacking.
Yeah, but it'll flow, it's not going to be formalized with a signal, so that, you know, as you see a gap, you can move up, you know, kind of like a roundabout. So that'll flow more freely. So there'll be less out to stack up. There's a couple people in here who haven't said anything. No? Well, we've heard good and bad. I really appreciate your coming, and this gentleman has one more thing to say. Yes, sir.
That's someone you can get?
Yeah.
Barry White, W-H-I-T-E. And I just have a question about the bike lane. How's that going to affect on parking on the street? I mean, if it's five feet wide, you only have a certain amount of width in the street to begin with.
Right. We have the bike lane adjacent to parking here. On the other side, I don't see any parking.
We've been able to accommodate the bike lane with the parking on the south side of Main Street with a five-foot bike lane. On the north side, you can see, Tom, that there are some, there's some shadows.
Yep.
And because we don't have sufficient width as you get towards the intersection, the bicyclists will have to share the roadway with the car.
Yep, down here.
Right.
Going west.
So we do provide a full bike lane on the south side of Main Street for the entire limits.
Are you a cyclist? Yeah, good. So you're going to get improved accommodation.
We can do nothing about the hill though, sir.
So you'll have, what we consider full accommodation now is five-foot shoulder width.
That's considered bike accommodation.
Yes.
So we have that on both sides of the street, as far as Pleasant Street, or approaching Pleasant Street, right about here, just past the Price Chopper. And then, on the north side, you have to share the lane with the vehicles until, well, for the rest of the project. Going up Pleasant, it looks like you've got a five-foot shoulder in both directions.
In answer to his question about the lane width, because I know why he's asking this right in front of his business, the lane width for the parking is slightly narrower, so that we could, but this, you know, it's not like the bike lane's occupied all the time with the bicyclist. You'll still be able to park cars there, it's going to be a little tighter. You will be able to park your delivery trucks there. They might, you know, touch the bike lane, or the door, or back of the truck might be in the bike lane, but you're talking about a temporary delivery situation that happens. You know, you look at places like Cambridge and communities that have that, that's just something, or even Boston. So it's not going to restrict or prohibit those type of activities.
Yeah, sure. Mr. Lundquist.
Question, correct, hard question again.
Not question.
You start on the east side, and you go up to top, it's an old lane. It's a start, and it's a stop on the bike lane. Where's it coming from? Not in this project, and how come it's going to end up at the top right there? What happens, the guy on the bike, all of a sudden, he's in traffic, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah.
This is a federal mandate, so why-
Right, we can't expand the limits of the project forever, so we, the finding where we can make an improvement.
So what's the big deal? To have a bike lane, but it's not existent until you hit the spot, and it quits when you get halfway up the hill. So the guy on the bike, he's at the mercy of the traffic.
Well, for that stretch within the limits of the project, we've made an improvement. That's, I guess, the answer I have for that. Anyone else? I just want to reiterate that these aren't complete, that if you want to get in touch with me, I have business cards here. I believe you can reach out through the handout that you have, has my address in there too. We appreciate your coming. I think we've heard a lot of good comments, and criticisms too, and that's important too. And with that, I'll officially close the hearing at 8:35, but we'll stay here as long as you want to chat about the job. We'll keep the boards up, and as long as there's someone in the room talking about the project, we'll stay here. Thank you very much for coming.